I'm Larry Curtis, campaign manager for Gary Keith Sr., along with Ed Miller, a part-time state employee working for State Senator Michael Brady, and also radio host of Stand Up Strong, Carl Pride, media center director of Brockton Cable Access, and Susannah Sudborough, a reporter with The Enterprise. Together, our group has worked hard to bring to you, the voters of the city of Brockton, this Candidates Forum. Some individuals have expressed both Ed's and my involvement in the interview process due to political association with some of the candidates for office. Together, we are here to ensure you that a balanced and transparent process has taken place during the interviews conducted October 5th, 6th, and 7th. All candidates have had the right of not being interviewed by any one of us if they believed a conflict existed. I am happy to report that all scheduled interviews were conducted without any candidates' objections. This forum would not have taken place without the collaborative efforts of our volunteers, The Enterprise, Brockton Cable Access, and our candidates. Remember, to get out and vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. It's an important election for the city of Brockton. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to the Brockton Candidates Forum 2021. I'm your host, Susannah Sudborough from the Brockton Enterprise, and we're pleased to have in studio today Mike Smith, who is a candidate for Ward 4 City Councilor. So, thank you so much for coming in, Mike.
Thank you for having me.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running?
I grew up in Brockton my whole life. I'm 34, I'm a homeowner. I've pretty much been doing stuff in the community to either do cleanups and try to build the city up for the parents-wise. Why I'm running is basically, I got tired of talking to the wall. I brought up many issues and it falls on deaf ears. So I said, you know what? Maybe I could do this. I thought, well, maybe I can't do it because I'm not a lawyer. But I said, I'd try it, good try. And people told me that you don't have to be a lawyer, you just have to care about the city. And I said, that's true, because I feel like a lot of the officials that we have, they don't actually care about the city. Me, I love my city. So I said, you know what? Let me step up and maybe everything that I'm already doing, I can use on bigger platforms.
Okay. So, in your mind, what are the most important issues facing the city right now?
I think the top priority right now is safety. The debris and the needles and the shops that's found on the playgrounds and our schools. It's the lack of care. And I do a lot of the needle cleanups out here, and the amount that we're finding is record highs. We pretty much do a cleanup every week, and we find probably 60 to 70 needles within three locations, actually right outside these doors. We do Perkins Park, we do the churches, we do playgrounds, schools, cemeteries, and it's an alarming rate. And I'm actually the one that's actually going against the nonprofit because of how much they give away. So trying to pretty much have them go back to their protocol. So it's an aim focused on the safety. There's a lot of different safety aspects of the city and what we're going through, but at the same time, there's nobody that's actually talking about it. You could look at all the candidates or incumbents, and no one has mentioned the safety, which that should be top priority. I think also the lack of businesses in the city, especially in Ward 4. And we have businesses that are literally leaving to go to another town, and they're welcoming with open arms. We need businesses here. If we don't, then there's no revenue. If there's no revenue, higher taxes. I'm business-friendly, I'm pro-business. So I want to open my doors and my phone's always on. They can reach me anytime, I want to build a relationship with these businesses.
So, if elected, what kind of things do you see the city council doing to address these issues?
I want to pretty much give a platform for these businesses. I feel like these businesses are not marketed at all for the businesses that we already have. If there's no marketing for the businesses that we already have, how can we draw in new businesses? I feel like the city has been not business-friendly for years, and I think that's something that the city needs to admit and admit with their wrong. It's hard to draw in businesses when they're treated a certain way. I feel like the lack of friendliness and the lack of connection and building a relationship where, when a business tries to register their business, at City Hall, they get charged $175. The next town over charges $35. So they're already being nickled and dined at the door. I feel like that needs to already, that's something that can be changed quick. And then the fact that a lot of these businesses are not maintained property-wise. So we could maintain the properties that are rough for sale, also release the list that is growing daily. There's 400 vacant properties in Brockton. But nobody can find out what these properties are because they don't release the list. That list needs to be released, that way our realtors can help the city to help sell them. And then as far as the needles, I brought different proposals to our mayor and different city councillors and city officials, state officials as well, and state representatives. And that's having that organization follow their protocol, but also putting shop boxes around the city and having that organization empty those shop boxes on a weekly basis.
Okay, interesting. So, as a ward councillor, you would have to represent not just your ward, but also do things for the city as a whole. How would you balance the needs of your ward versus the needs of your city?
Okay, so there's always things that get brought to us where it might be beneficial to the city, but not beneficial to the ward. And the best way I can handle that is, at the end of the day, I'm representing my ward. So if it's an issue that needs to be addressed to bring up the concerns, then that's what I'll speak on first. Then, at the same time, as Brockton, we are at the whole. So it might not be good for our ward, but it's good for our city, and what's good for our city we need to do. But at the same time, I will bring up these concerns. At the same time, as Ward 4 has dealt with many issues, we've dealt with a lot of issues that would have destroyed another ward. At the same time, Ward 4 is still a fighter at the end of the day. And it's looked at as the Sahara Desert of Brockton. It's got its nicknames. But at the same time, it's still striving. And that's the thing, it's, I will represent the city, but at the same, at the end of the day, I'm still representing my ward. So again, I will bring up the concerns so it doesn't affect Ward 4 as much, and maybe put things in place where it doesn't affect the ward, but it still benefits the city. And at the end of the day, again, I'm Ward 4 representative. I'm a Ward 4 resident, at least the candidate that is.
Right. So what kind of issues have you seen Ward 4 facing in recent years?
The main one would be lack of business, like I mentioned before, and the non-friendly officials that come into these businesses and that are literally scaring these businesses away. These officials have no business being in their business at the end of the day. And we need to build a relationship with these business owners and their staff, ask them what their needs are and what their concerns are, and help them. Mainly it's businesses over in that area. And it's literally turned into a parking lot. Look at the Cayman area. The Cayman area's been like that for years. They're just now getting the jumpy house area. But we still don't have stuff for our families to do on the weekends. There's still a lack of groceries departments in that area as well. And that's the concerns that we hear. But again, and then still the safety. They're still flying up and down the street. We definitely need speed traps placed in certain areas to maintain.
Okay, absolutely. Now getting into some more specific issues. A few years ago, the city entered into a trash agreement that resulted in smaller trash cans. This decision resulted in homeowners having to purchase the specific city-approved trash bags and having a lot of overflow. So these bags have seen a 25% increase in cost over the last couple of years. Whereas, I'm sure you know, just normal consumer trash bags can be purchased for much less. If elected, what do you think the city could do to try to address this issue?
I spoke with DPW, I actually went over there a few weeks back. I met with the director. And he expressed the concern on their end as well, because it's costing them more when this first started. And now, of course, they had to go up on their prices. So it's being handled, or actually, the issue is on both ends. But at the same time, this is the only company that really handles our trash. We can try to do something with the trash bags or maybe give more for a lesser price than what it is. But I think the barrels could be bigger. I have always said that. I think because at the same time, the barrel, the trash barrel is small and then you get the recycle, and that's taken every two weeks. I spoke to them, and they said that if you wanted another trash barrel, recycling one, you can get one at, you pay for another barrel, they will take it for free. At the same time, they're taking the other one. So if, I feel like also if people were recycling more, it would be less trash in the actual smaller bin. At the same time, there is definitely a need for the, actually, look at the dumping zones in the city. So when people start feeling like, I don't want to go all the way down there and pay the cost for that, they just dump it on the side of the road. So if maybe we work with them as well to try to handle sometimes some of the costs, but at the same time, we also, as residents, need to look at ourselves. And that's going through, like actually recycling more. I do a lot of the cleanups out here, and the trash is everywhere. It's at an alarming rate than ever before. I did the Salisbury River, that alone is 100 trash bags.
Wow.
Three, five hours a day, 100 trash bags, furniture, propane tanks. The dumping is completely out of control. And there's needles over there, there was tents on school property. I don't even know how that was even allowed in the first place.
Yeah.
And kids are walking back and forth. So they don't know who they are, they can get nabbed at any point. So trash, like I said, trash and the dumping is definitely a priority. And I feel like a lot of these businesses need to be held accountable for their property, and a lot are not. At the same time, our city officials need to crack down on those businesses as well and hold them accountable to, if it starts at a fine, and then go from there. Maybe take those fines and put them towards the businesses that we own. That way, we can cover the cost of that vacant lot.
I see, okay. So currently, the city council is elected every two years. A lot of city councillors and others in the city have said that's not enough time. So there has been talk of lengthening the terms to three or four years. What are your thoughts on that?
I feel like the city councillor should remain at two years because those wards may not be happy with that councillor. And I feel like, again, that councillor may think that that's not enough time. I think that's actually plenty of time. Because that resident have many issues with that councillor, but they're not actually taking care of their duties. I think that in that same time period, if they're not handling it, then next election, they should be taken out. I feel like the councils at large can be pushed at four because they have a wider area, which is the whole city. But ward councillors, I feel like they should stay at two. As far as mayor, I feel like the mayor should go to four. But I know that was ruined in the past, and that was the reason why it went from four to two.
I see, okay, interesting. And the other thing that's come up has been the possibility of changing city councillors from part-time to full-time job. What are you thinking about that?
If it goes from part-time to full-time, then that part-time to full-time rate needs to kick in. A lot of times too, is the work that they're doing right now is considered part-time, and the pay is part-time. But at the same time, that councillor is actually doing full-time type of work for part-time money. If it is the case, and they do give them full-time, then hopefully the rates match.
Absolutely. Is that something you think could be good for the city going to full-time?
Yeah, because I feel like those councils can be in the community more because I feel like the councils that we have right now have a lack of connection with our community. So they bring up issues that are not a concern to the community because it's just the lack of being out there. They don't get their hands dirty.
I see, okay. Yeah, so for these last couple of minutes, I wanted to give you a chance to let our audience know anything about you that we haven't talked about and, you know, tell them why you think you would be a good fit for this position.
Okay, let's see, let's start off at, I'm the only councillor, that candidate to ever do a ride-along with our Brockton police officers in the history of Brockton. I did an eight-hour shift to see things through their eyes and to see the hard. I've been in the city my whole life, and they still brought me through areas I've never even saw, in their eyes. It definitely shows that they need the funding, they need the equipment, they need the vehicles. We are fully understaffed. To have 105,000 citizens in our city, we have eight offices per shift. On a Friday night in Brockton, or a Saturday night in Brockton, we have eight offices, that's completely uncalled for. And it's actually unsafe. I'm not saying our officers don't do their job, but at the same time, we need more of them. I've met with Brewster, I've met with our new fire chief, Chief Nidelli. I've expressed my concerns about the needles. They know I'm going after these needles, and I'm making them change this whole protocol. This helps them because their protocol is when a needle is found by a resident, they have to call Brewster. Brewster comes in and takes that needle. I feel our first responders shouldn't be responding to these calls. Our resources are being used for a smaller cause. I feel like when their needles are found, the company that's actually giving them away, they can do a hotline and use their company vehicles to come get them. I also, I think the city needs some food trucks out here. I'm all for that. Like I said, I feel like the city has, we have a museum, but we don't have as much art as we could have. We could have our artists, we have many artists in the city. They could use that as a platform to grow and build their name as well. I'm actually putting together a food drive with John Hayes and Richard Monk, and we're gonna try to get them some needs, the essentials, and try to get some food in their stomach as well. But at the same time, it's also cleaning up the area as well. There's a lot of tents that are definitely being placed in a lot of areas of the city. And it's just the lack of programs being used, and the programs are not being promoted as they should, like the Champion Plan, it was just a great plan. And a lot of them don't even know about it.
All right, well, thank you so much, Mike, for your time. Unfortunately, that's all the time we have, but thank you so much for taking the time to help us get to know you. And for everybody watching, don't forget to vote on November 2nd in the citywide election. Hello and welcome to the Brockton Candidates Forum 2021. I'm your host, Susannah Sudborough from the Brockton Enterprise, and we are pleased to have in studio today city councillor, Ward 4 Susan Nick Castro, who is running for reelection this year. So thank you so much for coming in, Susan.
You're welcome.
Why don't you tell us a little about yourself and why you're running for reelection?
Okay, well, I'm a 31-year resident of Brockton. I moved here when I married my husband, attorney John Tuig. I'm also an attorney. We have two young adult sons, Edward and Benjamin Tuig. And they're in their early to mid-20s now, so I have a little bit more time, they're educated. And so, a few years ago, I became active in a matter in Ward 4 involving a proposed fossil fuel burning power plant. And it lasted a long time until it was finally, not quite laid to rest. It's not dead yet, but not far off. And I watched and I observed and I listened, and at the end of all of that, I thought, I think I might want to get involved in the city, a little more involved. I had been a member of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so in 2015, I ran for councillor at large. I lost by 116 votes to councillor Winthwaite Farwell. And two years later, I ran for Ward 4 and won.
Awesome. Yeah, so as someone who's been on the city council for a while, what do you think are the biggest issues facing the city council right now?
Well, according to the city's charter, which I think is 100 years old or so, the main job of the city council is to watch the purse, you know, to approve funding, to approve the budget every year. That's its main job per the charter. It has morphed into so much more. And I know for myself, I do a lot of constituent services, and I can tell you more about that probably a little later. But our main job right now is to make sure that funds that are coming into the city as the result of COVID-19, the CARES Act funds, the ARPA funds, and so on, are well-spent. We have a great opportunity here with the funds coming in from the federal government for infrastructure and improvements to get it right and do a good job. And that's our biggest role.
Okay, so yeah, when you say well-spent on infrastructure and improvements, what kind of things are we talking about?
Well, I do a lot of constituent services. I've gotten over 500 calls, emails, messages, people giving me an elbow in the line at the supermarket. And one of the biggest issues that I hear about is the condition of the roads in our community. And I've done a lot of work with the DPW Commissioner, both the interim one, Patrick Hill, and the one who retired in June, Larry Rowley. And I learned that we have over 300 miles of roads in the city of Brockton. And in many instances, they have not been well-maintained because the funds were spent in other ways. We also have quite a few bridges in Brockton, many of which need improvement. So, and there's also broadband concerns that are covered by ARPA. So these funds are coming in from the Fed specifically earmarked for this work. And part of that is because, to put people to work in making these improvements. But this is an opportunity for us to fix a lot of roads once and for all, not just patch them, but actually repave them. And in many instances, unfortunately, in the years when a lot of the neighborhoods in Brockton were growing, the 60s and the 70s, the roads weren't laid correctly. So, and I learned all of this from the retired DPW Commissioner. So in many instances, to fix the roads, they have to be, they have to be taken right down to Dersch, which is very costly and time-consuming. We will have the funds to do more of that as a result of these programs.
Okay.
How's that for a long time on roads? But it's a huge issue.
Yeah.
I know the road that I live on, it's a dead end, and it's like the lunar surface, the condition of it is so bad.
Oh, wow.
It wasn't the worst thing when my children were learning to drive because it forced them to drive slowly. But it can be a real nuisance for people.
Absolutely. Any other big issues that you see the city facing that you plan on tackling if you're re-elected?
Well, I really do hope that I am re-elected. I've been serving now, this will be the end of my second, we're in the end of my second term, so it'll be four years. And I need a few more years to do, to set some, to address some of the goals that I have for Ward 4. Some of the biggest things that we will work in tandem with the executive officer, the mayor, is code enforcement. We're encouraging that, and you know, we find we may have to fund additional overtime for the police and health workers and that kind of stuff. We all have a goal of improving the quality of life of the community.
Great. So, as a ward councillor, how do you balance representing not just your ward, but also the city as a whole with the needs of your ward?
So often, if something is good or bad for Ward 4, it's also good or bad for the city. And you always have to look at a project, a proposal, with an eye toward how does this work for all of us in addition to Ward 4. Ward 4 is burdened with some situations, issues that benefit the entire city. But it's a major burden on Ward 4. The examples I would give you is the wastewater treatment plant is in Ward 4. Until relatively recently, it incinerated its sludge. And we always knew when that was happening because I'd have to run around the house like a mad woman, closing all the windows because the air would be so fetid. We also have the landfill, which some of my neighbors and friends call Mount Trashmore. For many years before it was capped, terrible odors. And at times, it would leak. And some of the byproducts of decomposing garbage is methane. And it would kill cats in neighborhoods. Cats would be out and about and come back. All kinds of issues would happen. So, that's something that we have to learn from. Because they bettered the city, we had to have somewhere to put our garbage, we had someplace for our water to go in our sewage, but at a detriment to Ward 4. So I'm very mindful of that.
Absolutely. So now getting into some more specific issues that our viewers have brought up to us. Three years ago, the city entered into a trash agreement that resulted in a smaller trash container. The decision resulted in homeowners having to purchase the city-approved trash bags for the overflow. And these trash bags have seen a 25% increase in cost over the last two years. Meanwhile, normal consumer trash bags can be purchased for quite a bit less. So if re-elected, what might we be able to do about this issue?
Well, the DPW Division in charge of that, the recycling depot, I spend a lot of time talking to them and the head of it, Patrick Sullivan, because I get a lot of calls about trash and the lack of trash pickup at times, as well as yard waste and recycling. That contract is going to come due soon. And then I'd say in the next five years, probably less than five years. And at that time, I've been assured that the rates for collecting and disposing of trash and recycling have all increased mightily. And so it is likely that our rates will increase and we will have to make some adjustments. Now, I wasn't on the council that approved that contract, and that was done under Mayor Bill Carpenter. But the reason that the trash can got smaller was because that was the size of the trash can that was legally allowed according to the ordinance. And everyone was not paying attention to that and using larger trash cans. It's a problem. It's not, I mean, when my kids are home, I have two bags, two green bags in addition to that little trash can.
Sure.
It's just not enough capacity for the amount of trash that a family creates. And I would be all for negotiating, our rates are going to go up anyway, to get a larger trash can, a can the size of the recycling cans. I've also made an effort, and so have a lot of my neighbors, to recycle more.
Yep, that makes sense. So another issue that's come up is that small business owners have expressed frustration over the process of getting their projects approved in a timely fashion. A lot of the concerns tend to deal with the length of time it takes to get approvals from different boards and city departments, which sometimes results in businesses simply taking their business elsewhere. So what can the city do to try to tackle this problem?
One thing they can do, and it depends on the kind of business. But if the business is making changes to a piece of real estate, oftentimes, they have to go for approval. They might need variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals. They might need other approvals, site plan review by the Planning Board. They also might need Conservation Commission approval if they're working within or near the wetland. The Conservation Commission meets twice a month, but the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals only meet once a month. And I have long thought that they should meet more often, especially when there are large projects, when there's a lot of work. You know, there's, the work that goes in front of, say, the ZBA, for example, it ebbs and flows with the time of year, with the economy. And I think in times where we're hopping, where there's a lot going on, they need to meet more often. I don't think the frequency of their meetings is set by ordinance. I don't think it is. But if they didn't decide to do it, and there was a general consensus among council members, we could file an ordinance amendment to make them meet more often. I think that's part of it. Another commission that probably gets in the mix of that is the License Commission. It also meets monthly. So that's one thing that can be done.
Okay, absolutely. So another issue that's come up is that, right now, as you know, the city council is re-elected every two years. There's been talk of changing that to maybe four or three-year terms. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, all of us, the mayor, the city council members, and the school committee members, we all serve two-year terms.
Right.
For myself, it's not enough. It's not enough time. Now, four years might be too long. So I might be inclined, and I have So I might be inclined, and I have talked to other council members about entertaining three years. That's not set out in our charter or in our ordinances. So we would have to go to the state with the Home Rule Petition to ask for that change. I would be willing to support it. I think it would help a lot. You know, normally, two years is not long enough. And then you mix COVID, the pandemic, and the impacts that we're, we continue to feel, but that we started feeling in the winter of 2020. And I think my biggest disappointment for this term, this past almost two years, has been COVID kind of derailed so many of my goals and the goals I know of the mayor and of the city.
Yeah, that makes sense. The other question that's come up with that is, right now, the city council is part-time. Would you be in favor of switching that to full-time to perhaps give them more time to get more done?
I would certainly support a study. You know, why reinvent the wheel? Someone should sit down and look at what do other cities do, and in particular, gateway cities. Boston has three-quarter of a million, actually more, I think 800,000 residents. Their city council is full-time. They make about 100 grand a year, plus they get a staff and an office. That's different than a city of 105,000, which is what we are. I would love to study to see what other similarly sized and budgeted cities are doing about that. One thing I could tell you as to full-time and part-time, one thing I could say for sure is, I don't think our city council is paid enough. Our members are paid enough. And that needs to be looked at as well if a study was undertaken. And I would support that.
Okay, absolutely. So I wanted to give you a chance before we wrap up to address your constituents and let them know anything about yourself or your reelection that you think we haven't talked about that would be important to mention.
Okay, something that I'm very proud of is earlier this year, I submitted and ultimately the council approved, an ordinance that I wrote on equity, inclusion and diversity. We created a standing committee of the council to address these issues. I'm very proud to have done that for my residents and for all of the city of Brockton. And I'm only just beginning. I have so much more to do. It's my pleasure to serve. I use all of my talents, my life experience, my legal background, my writing skills in this job. Earlier this year, I also, I sat on the technical review committee of the wastewater treatment plant, plant contract because the contract for both the water treatment and the wastewater treatment are up this year. And that was fascinating and took about 25 hours. It's my pleasure to serve the city of Brockton and I would like to continue to do so. And so I humbly ask my residents to vote for me and to get out and vote. We were disappointed in the turnout in the preliminary election. Please vote on November 2nd and I'd be honored by your vote. How's that, Susannah?
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for your time today, Susan. Unfortunately, that's all the time we have. But for everybody watching, don't forget to vote in the November 2nd citywide election.